Good morning, everyone. We'll go and call the commissioners meeting to order.
We will call Davis County Council Meeting to order.
Alright, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for being here. We all received the bids last Friday. We've got them tabulated. Got some, I'd call them thirty thousand foot results sent out. In the meantime, I've reached out to our QAW, to Garmong, and then met with Jeff Owens. And so, really, try and get this thing down to fifteen thousand, ten thousand feet. Now that we've had some time to look over the bid tabulations, asked for everyone to get together to see, after our first glance, were there any issues? Were there any duplications? I think ultimately, our goal is to get the project done as is for a lower dollar amount. And then, once we get that dollar amount to the levels we think we can get it, then what do we need to start cutting? Because twelve million's what we're shooting for, and that's our goal. That's our line.
Matt, can you hand me a pen?
So, Jeremy, I was kind of turning it over to you. Kind of give us your initial thoughts, and then we'll see what the board needs.
Sure. So, if you've all had a chance in the packet, I'm sorry if it's a little behind here passing that down. Had it sitting here. The best packet would have got emailed out on Wednesday. So, there's a final budget summary sheet, which should be your kind of first sheet on the more eight and a half by eleven side, on the two pages there. And then, really, that's a summary of your construction costs, a contingency we would recommend and plan for you to carry, our fee, along with the soft costs that have been created to date. And, you know, that's your designer's cost, our pre-construction cost, and then just other necessities of the project, builder's risk insurance, and then handful of the other things you've already, where maybe we've committed to, you know, property survey, utility locates, advertisements, and then furniture fixtures and equipment. We've budgeted that at five percent for you, and that's something that you have to go through and identify the cost of those new furniture. The judges do have some equipment that they'll need from a equipment allowance perspective, that we're carrying there for courtroom equipment. And then, obviously, relocation cost of, you know, the human capital and other cost of moving furniture, getting people set up in an interim perspective. And then, abatements from the asbestos. And then, City of Washington's going to have some costs that will need identified. I think they have a ordinance that you have to share when they set a new transformer for you. You have to share that cost with them in a fifty-fifty fashion as a rate user. So, that all totaled, your current cost right now on that is at thirteen eight ten. Went through, refined some of the other general conditions in the construction, and then looked at some current cost on those. I do know yesterday, I believe, Dale had sent out some quotes that he got from the judges on some of their equipment. Haven't had a chance to update those yet. First glance, I think they were under that hundred and twenty K allowance that we had had for the two courts. I don't know if it included a magistrate court yet. I haven't had the time to review that one yet. So, a quick recap on the side there just shows where we were budgeting from a design development perspective at our DD phase level budget. So, knowing the goal and where the goals are at with reducing costs and trying to have the total project at twelve million dollars. Couple of things. I know Grant's in here now. Grant and I did have a talk, and we just wanted to kind of reaffirm with your attorney that is on our tenure, Stephen Jones, and had some discussions with him. What are our options? Because our first and foremost thing is we always want to make recommendations that ensure that you stay within the laws of the statute for public works and public bidding. We don't recommend or do anything that creates a potential for claim or lawsuit or anything like that, that as we look through, how do we reduce scope outside of any alternates and things that we had had? So, the first and foremost thing is, is if we choose to not go rebid and look at scope, you're going to approve a body, or the body's going, or council's going to approve that funding amount, and with the commissioners. And then, any reductions we need to make after that, we're going to be going through more of a proposal request process to say, hey, here's a proposal request to eliminate ballistic panels. So, I'm just throwing out some examples. But we do have to go through that route. So, still make awards based on those bids, be issued contracts, let the work start, and then look at what are some of those reductions that we can do. If we have any major overhauls of changes, our best case probably is going to be a rebid then. But as we look through some of those, we handle those in what we call a value engineering process. So, a lot of those, we've already done throughout the design process, right? It's looking at alternatives on everything, and then we have alternates that were kind of the, what I call the low hanging fruit. You know, hey, these are nice things we would like to do while we're doing it here. Are they necessities? No. So, let's treat them as an alternate. The base bid is really encompassing everything that's within the scope or the walls of the courthouse. That here's all the necessities that we do need, and the extra nice to have, so we've already treated as an alternate. So, I think from that perspective, really have the basis of the projects that's there. Now, is there still some other low hanging fruit we could look at? Some things that are like for like, that we could go back and through a value engineering process? Yeah, I think there is. So, a few examples that Grant had sent out yesterday that we had talked through. One of them's kind of right here in front of you. So, in the courthouse, in the judges' chambers, their bench is a natural species wood. So, it's oaks and add on, what's the actual species? Is it oak or maple? Yeah, so it's a level of finish. So, the grade B would be how much knot, knots, wood knots would you see in that wood? So, it's a little bit finer grade. So, you just don't have some of those extra blemishes. But that's an actual natural wood. Could we look at putting in a bench that is more similar to yours that's here? Yes. Is it the full amount of the savings you're looking for? No, it's not. But those things do start adding up. Multiple to the courtrooms. We get the two primary courtrooms and magistrate room. Could we look at those things from the benches, the jury boxes, any railings in there, the back paneling? Go to more of a plastic laminate. So, this is probably a MDF finish laminated with, you know, a fabricated manufactured product that's made to look like wood. So, that is one option. The other option is eliminating things like ballistic panels. Those are one that I'd say you're in the fifty-fifty of courthouse renovations, where you have a handful of those incorporated into the wall. So, that's in the event that someone makes it past or through security up to courtroom, judge's chamber. The location of those is around those. Again, that's, those are specific owner-driven decisions. But, you know, there is some significant cost on that. When we start looking at a handful of those things, you know, we can start getting up into the, I'm sorry, I'm pulling this back up here. What, if we start getting into those things from the construction side, there is, you know, possibly, what I'm going to tell you is maybe a one fifty, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range money that we could go collect back on changing a few of those things and or reducing the scope. On the, yeah, on the, from the, just the construction side. I'm not into soft cost yet. But, and it's with a few of those items. There's not a lot, a tremendous amount of wholesale items that are like for like. Need to get past that, really need to start looking at what are options that you just need to remove and cut scope. So, I know one of the options we had thrown out was is just vanilla boxing the magistrate court. So, not, we do the renovations, change HVAC and plumbing and where that goes, you just vanilla box that. Grant, you and I had talked of, well, do the old commissioners' chamber that's kind of in that proximity, could we just leave it there? The current design doesn't line up with that. Some of the walls from the courtroom that go over to that kind of consume into that space. Could we tear out that wall and just make that room a little bit smaller, still not do anything? Yes, we could. The other challenges come more back to the heart of one of your main items for this renovation is the HVAC and the plumbing renovations. So, the old building, as you deal with the heights of the floor to floor, a lot of our access, you know, I know Larry's mechanical engineers has spent a lot of time of where do all the routes of all this piping and the static duct systems go? You have a VRF system, which is a local unit that is receiving condensate water or water, and it's either heating or cooling that water locally. And then, your duct work's limited because it's a static duct that just goes out from those. But there's dozens of those cassettes, that they're called, above the ceiling. They're meant for lower profile renovation settings like this, where you don't have main big air handlers and huge trunk lines that might be three foot wall, three foot, four foot tall, so that transverse that air through the building. So, that said, we don't have those huge ducts that really reduce, limit our ceiling height space. We have a lot of piping that is going around the building in there. So, the more we keep something like that open, building kind of starts creating the Pandora box of, well, if we're utilizing that room, or kind of want to just keep just that room maybe to use as an interim magistrate court, really starts creating those challenges and around the mechanics of the HVAC and the plumbing systems. If we're going to look at something like it, my recommendation would be if we're going to, you know, quote unquote, remove that scope, you leave that as a shell for something you fit out in the future, you know? From when we had these discussions today, haven't had time to prepare that cost or that range of what that could be yet on that item. But to the point of getting from the thirteen eight ten where we're at today down to a twelve, we're looking for all of that in the construction budget. I think we can find some value engineering items that are in that one fifty to two fifty range of what we're seeing today that are on like-for-like changes. Then after that, it's really good looking at more wholesale scoped cuts. Now, the other side of that is, we haven't went back to our bidders yet and said, hey, is there anything else that you've seen? Try to be a little, I try to be a little guarded on that from my perspective and my in, my interaction with that until we get to really contracts and negotiating phases on that. Just, you know, I want to try to follow, we've got to try to follow our statute as best as possible. From there, with shifting from construction then to soft cost, you know, your soft cost budget already is pretty minimal. The main things in your soft cost budget, I'm sorry?
Minimal? Is that what you said? What's our soft cost currently? Like, one point nine million?
One point nine million, yep.
And that's minimal?
I would tell you it is yes compared to other projects. But your savings that are, that are really the most opportunistic, because everything else in that, Nathan, you have your design that's in there. That's, you've paid for that, that's there. That's the, that's the largest brunt of it. Other than that, everything else is necessities that you're going to need. You're going to need builder's risk insurance. You're going to, we're going to recommend pulling in a third-party tester for testing any concrete, piping testing, those things. We're going to want those certs and all that. Your abatement costs for the hazardous materials, you're going to have to do that. That's.
And that's all part of the soft costs?
Those are all part of the soft costs. Your main opportunity really comes into whether, how much you want to spend on furniture. So, right now, the plan is, is we've looked at those spaces, looking at is buying new furniture. So, really, your main opportunity is what can we reuse from a furnishing perspective?
Yeah, I mean, getting two million out of twelve is one thing, but getting two million out of ten, which is in essence what we're talking about, is harder, right?
Yeah.
A lot harder. Because when you're talking hundreds of thousands instead of millions of dollars, it's going to be hard.
Well, I think Garmong and whatever step Garmong and Taber Owens can get together and kind of look at who's doing what. You know, I'm hopeful there's several three, or several six digits that we can kind of merge or.
And they may have some ideas on how they're approaching kind of the means and methods of how they've quantified their bid and are looking at it. So, those are the routes we could take from a value engineering perspective that are more on construction side, owner side, soft cost side, and look at where we can go. My personal opinion is I feel that it's still going to be a challenge to get to your end goal. I, you know, there's not a two million dollar carrot that's just sitting in there collectively. You know, you're, you're going to have still probably some new furniture needs. And decide how things are laying out of what may be able to be reused and what really is assets useful life expectancy that really just may need replaced. So, it would be, it would be a challenge. Now, if we want to do, look at the magistrate side and vanilla boxing that, if you will, the systems would be there. We just wouldn't put any walls, fits, finishes, electric. It's, it's hard for me to throw a number right out on it. Because we really got to go back there and put pen to paper on it. But if we look at that, though, that's enough change in scope where if we go that route, I would tell you really need to re, change in the scope enough. Other bidders could contest that, well, I didn't get an opportunity to look at that. It does help in talking with Stephen that, you know, from a general trades perspective, we just had the one bidder that, well, everyone else is offering to look at it. They've elected not to, so they don't have a position to contest that change that they weren't afforded that opportunity to look at it. I just know it's from a wholesale cut perspective, it's probably your better buy. You know, the kind of old saying we have is when you get the first bids, it's everything. When you go start deducting stuff, you're, you know, you're getting ten cents on the dollar. It's not the case. That's my job, make sure we're getting the best value and stuff back. But, you know, it is hard. It's challenging, probably get maybe intended or expected profit percentages also back off of that.
And you're not going to get a hundred percent. That's what happened with this building. Anything we deducted off that price, it was never a hundred percent deduction. It was always a different number. And that's what I'm afraid of. If we accept the base bid and we go back and try to change the scope of work, we're not going to get a hundred percent of that deduction back.
It is. And the whole approach, it is a catch twenty-two. So, you can go that route with some of these smaller items and or larger scale scope reductions. The opposite side you run into is, you know, taking it back out to the market, you know? Some of the bidders that participate the first time may choose not to bid again.
Rebid, yeah.
And we've seen that. Four times on the knock, though, I would tell you, eight times out of ten, they usually do come back and rebid. It's, it's more on the slider end, you know? They want the opportunity to go earn and add some revenue to their books. So.
Grant, can you go to the mic? Because I know there's people watching, and they cannot hear you speak. Thank you.
If we decide that we're rebidding to truly do a, a more of a dramatic reduction in scope, so that it, the effort would be to definitely get it within the budget that's been established and going only with like a, I don't know, for lack of a better term, a necessity. Yeah, and I, so, I think what I mentioned was is there's not a whole lot of, I'm calling what I would call extras that are left in the construction side. And the project is what it, we're replacing the windows. You're tuck pointing the exterior of the building. The roof is assets life expectancy. It's had its coating put on it that had a fifteen-year warranty. You know, that coating was a affordable solution for the leaky roof that did come with a warranty and a fifteen-year. You still have your original roof that's there. Amount of penetrations and cuts that we are making through the HVAC design, or the DOAS unit and HVAC units that are sitting on that roof, and the steel supports and the structures that hold them, you're going to really need to replace that roof. Especially the amount and the investment that you're putting into it. The last thing I'd want to recommend is that you don't do that. So, to me, those are all necessities. The, if there is any lesser, lower hanging fruit that's out there, it's, I mean, it's simply, it's changing from hardwood species that you would typically see in any type of courthouse to more of a plastic laminate.
Here, I mean, not necessarily today, but would you be able to tell us, as far as the roof windows and tuck pointing? I mean, those are projects that the commissioners are going to have to do in the next two to three years regardless. We would have done them probably eighteen months ago, but then we knew this renovation was coming, and we didn't want to do one followed by the other. And so, in my head, I'm thinking, okay, twelve million dollars to renovate the inside of that courthouse is crazy. Well, it's not twelve million dollars to renovate the inside because these three things, we have to do regardless. And I want to get to that twelve million number, but psychologically, in my head, logically in my head, I got to say, okay, what is this? Is just deferred maintenance. So, could you?
Those three things are worth just over a million dollars. Windows are four-ten and some change. The tuck pointing is three hundred and twenty. And the roof is another, I think, three thirty.
So, those are must-dos in the next twenty-four, thirty-six months. Now, on the HVAC, that's something where if the boiler doesn't blow, we're good. If the boiler blows, we're S.O.L.
It's not the boilers, all the limes.
Or whatever. So, as far as the HVAC system goes approximately, do you know what that is?
And that's, that's the one that's, as we've always started on this project, that's the one that is the main challenge, right? So, can you continue to operate and just replace a boiler here and there? Yes. But the minute you start looking at the wholesale renovation of the project, that's the opportunity to change the system, create now a healthier building, right? You're still dealing with systems that are from a nineteen twenty-eight building that don't perform the way that we need buildings to perform and change over air in the class and the occupancy spaces like you would need now that meet current design codes. And I don't know if you want to speak more to that, if I hit that perfectly.
I guess just from a higher level, I'm trying not to get in the weeds a whole lot. But I know that number is included in plumbing, mechanical, and electric in some capacity is the HVAC system.
Correct.
So, if you total those numbers, it's really roughly, you get about two point eight, two point nine million.
Right about that three million dollar threshold from an HVAC perspective.
Then you'll have.
Well, that's for all electric, all plumbing, all mechanical.
That just getting demo out and in and in place and not finish this put back.
Yeah. So, if, if you were to replace that today, the amount of demo you would be doing throughout the building to get duct work out, the ceilings, the plaster walls. I couldn't even, I don't even know if I could find you an HVAC contractor that would want to replace the system without the full-fledged renovation.
So, two to three million dollars?
You're going to be, what you're talking about, you're going to be sixty-eight million total. I'm saying with all this right here, and HVAC, your plumbing, your wiring, and then getting the building back so it's usable.
Be totaled.
I'd say between six and eight million.
Yeah, your mechanical bid is, and I'm sorry, I'm rounding up for easy math and round numbers in the discussion here. But, you know, that's, that's one point two of the price. You know, there's also some plumbing components with that. I don't have that breakdown on it, and electrical components. But I know from day one, we've always been budgeting that just that mechanical portion is worth about that two-five to two-eight range. But the hard part that's there to grasp is, that doesn't count for is, yes, that's the part of it when you're doing it in concurrent with a renovation.
Have to bust it out and put it back.
If we were just to go attempt to do something there today, that, it is, that's a challenge to tell you what it would really take to replace that.
So, if we, if we didn't, and again, I, we get twelve million is the number I've got in my head. So, I'm not trying to add government math to this. But I'm just, if we don't move forward, and we have to replace the HVAC, and we do the windows, tuck pointing, and the roof, we're probably looking at a six million dollar project if we can get someone to bid on it-ish.
And you're replacing the HVAC is, isn't going to be long-term solutions? Can you, if your specific units that are there, can you replace those?
No, I mean duct work, everything.
Yeah, and do, yeah, it's a.
So, we're going to have a fairly large expense regardless of which direction do we go. It's just, do we want to renovate a courthouse, or do we want a refurbished courthouse with a new HVAC system?
And then, we'll deal with these problems down the road.
I'm sorry?
And then, if we don't, we will deal with these problems down the road. Could be quicker, could be sooner.
Yes. Yeah, and, you know, I think Scott, obviously, he's dealing with plenty of stuff over there right now as it relates to the tuck pointing and the windows and the infiltration really from that, from the limestone.
There is water penetrating that courthouse.
Starting on the end here, we've got a lot of information here so far from Jeremy. Ron, you want to lead off? What's your thought?
Sure. When you look at any project and where we're at and timeframe, there's still a lot of money flowing down from the government for projects, was going to keep demand up and probably higher prices down the road yet. And I look at this and projects and how you could cut. You end up cutting, you're going to end up with less of a project, and maybe happy with it, may not be. I think, and again, we only had one bid, there's a chance if it's good back out, we get none. And it's a local company. They're reputable. I don't see any problem there. Sure, Jeremy can sit down with them and sharpen the pencil a little bit, but that'll be minimal compared to what we're looking for. I think the easiest solution and the best solution, not only because it's easy, is to find the money and do it. And I can, I mean, I can elaborate on that, on where the money should come from. But as I look at the big picture and years of precedent, we helped the city to the tune of about a million dollars on Highway fifty, public infrastructure, courthouse, public infrastructure. Between the foundation, the redevelopment commission, there's millions of dollars in assets held. Maybe it's time to flip some of those, and you want to do it to where you can still somewhat control it. The Olan building generates about three hundred thousand dollars a year. There's question on who should actually have ownership of that building. I don't care who has ownership, but the proceeds of that, be nothing wrong in my mind of coming to a project like this. Generates three hundred thousand, maybe we ask the foundation for a hundred and fifty for a period of four or five years. And then, my biggest thing, because of other things that are down the road, is I look at it. If our financial consultant tells us, well, you can bond, well, you're looking at a six million dollar bond. If you're asking for a six million dollar bond, five, five million dollar bond, but no, you don't have to raise anything, then I'd say we've had too much fluff for a number of years. And I still say the, for the projects come down the road, and we said on Ready Two Point O is going to come out, which basically would be twenty percent free money to a decent project. I think when you look at everything, the best scenario is to increase the income tax a quarter percent, similar to when they built the jail, and that would roll into lowering of the property tax. But again, I'm one of many voices.
Alright, thank you. Marilyn?
Sitting on the council, we decided as we went through things that twelve million was the number because we felt like that's what we could afford when we take into account all the other projects and possible projects. And I guess, when I look at it, I'm thinking, what are we going to get into when we actually get into the project? Because if we say it's going to be thirteen million, and now all of a sudden, we have all these other things pop up, now how do we come up with that extra money, right? Because when you dig into something old, a lot of times, there's a lot of things that we can't see until we get there, and then I feel like it's going to increase there too. So, where is that stopping point, right? I mean, I felt like when we set the budget, that that's, that's where it needs to be.
Thank you.
I'll make one comment quick there.
Yes.
We are recommending, and it's in your thirteen point eight. We are recommending, and it's in your thirteen point eight or thirteen million eight-ten budget there. We are recommending and have that in there that you're carrying a five percent contingency on construction costs of five forty. So that is uncommitted, that would be used towards when, you are, you're gonna have, you know. We don't know what skeletons are behind some of the walls that are in there, so the, the, you know, to say that. Um, it's gonna be a change order free job, I'd be coming up the line here, there's never been one in the history of America on a public works project. So there's gonna be something like that, right? So that's why we do recommend that you would carry that five percent.
Isn't a five percent enough? I mean, just normally with projects, we did the runway extension, they had ten percent contingency, you know, just to make sure that that was covered.
Our trends, even if we're doing a new build, we're usually recommending anywhere from two point five to three. Um, and that usually, that I would tell you, and ninety-five percent of the time usually suffice us. Um, and renovations, we're usually in that, we're doubling just from the fact of it is a renovation. That is the trends that we typically do see.
But the unknowns are gonna be there, whether it's a thirteen point seven million dollar budget or twelve million dollar budget. That's gonna be constant.
Well, my, my whole thing, I mean, yeah, you're absolutely right, Ron, but. We, you know, I know the council for years has been looking at all the projects that we have going on, coming into the future and the cash flows of the county. And I agree, there's other resources that we could use for that. I'm very hesitant to use economic development resources for the courthouse project. Because it's not really, you know, a source of, you know, economic stimulus. You know, the people that go in to, that can use the courthouse facility are professionals for their reason. Or they're there because they have to be, and I'm not sure that they're generating more economic stimulus for the, for the county. So I'm hesitant for the economic, I think there are other resources, the ready funding, the ready two point oh, like we're in that meeting. I really think the governor wants, in my opinion, from whatever, that money will go towards infrastructure at Westgate. Because it's an existing project, maybe not, I just, it's a thing that I have. So in my opinion, you know, we had that twelve million dollar budget, I would like to stick to that. I know we haven't had time to value engineer all this stuff, but in my opinion, I think that's the next step for me is to see how far we can get down that and then look at other some fun, other funding sources. So that's my opinion.
If and when we start on this, personally, I don't wanna piecemeal it because it'll end up costing a lot more than thirteen eight in the end. If we try to piecemeal it, in my opinion. I would like to stick with the money that we have said we're gonna borrow on the bond and stay with that. But I would like to try to find some additional funding somewhere that we could pull. And do this project and do it right. Because so many times I think we've done stuff personally. That we've tried to shortcut this and that, and we end up saying in the end, well, I wish I would've went ahead and done it right. So my two cents or one point eight million, whichever you wanna look at is. I would, I would like to do this project and do it right. And hopefully, uh, through a few discussions, we can get that price down just a little more. And maybe we won't need the five percent contingency, so maybe that number's gonna be down a little bit. But if we're gonna do it, I wanna do it right. And, and we're gonna displace people to do whatever we do over there, basically. Do we wanna displace them two or three times over a period of years to get the thing done? I don't want to.
I came in, came in here pretty firm with my feet in concrete that we weren't to go, we're not gonna go over the twelve. But when you're talking half of it, could be the five things that has to be done anyway. And I, I agree with Matt, we're not, we're not gonna rob, edit, we're not gonna rob a few of these things. And we are not going to borrow more than the five because that's where our cash flows projections say that we can easily make that payment. However, we're, we're not gonna do something and look back and, and have shoddy work and have our employees in something that's not where it needs to be. Our standards in Davis County have been pretty good and intend to keep it that way. We, I, we, whoever wants to join, we could go back. I know we didn't spend any money in help, which we had set aside. So there's, there's maybe areas. Um, where we can find some additional funds, uh, we're not gonna borrow anymore, but we can see. We'll, we'll dig into it. Talk to Baker Tilly a little bit, we'll look at the things that we have that maybe we could do differently. Financing structurally, but yeah, we're not gonna borrow anymore, but we, we gotta do it right. We're not. Not gonna come back and start ripping up floors, put in duct work. You're up, big boy.
I guess I echo most of everything that was said here regarding. The funding side, I mean, I, I mean, we, we looked at the, we looked at the budget, we looked at the numbers, we looked at the potential project cost upfront. And the twelve million dollars is where we were and. To hold that, now, I will say, coming in and listening and hearing. On what Jeremy educated us on regarding tearing out the HVAC and the costs that are associated with that. Is, does kinda change the ballgame from the standpoint if we're gonna take care of those basic necessities. Uh, roof and tuck pointing and windows, and I would throw HVAC in that ballpark. When you, when you tear in an old building like that and try replacing HVAC, it's a nightmare, it's a mess. So that, the scope of that, the scope of that aspect of the project just, again, opened my eyes is that it is a lot more. And I, I think we need to, we need, we need to do that. Uh, again, getting somebody to do it, like you say, may be a big challenge in itself without a total complete renovation. Can we come up with some additional funds? Probably somewhere we can, we can get funds again. Little, little apprehensive about using economic development money. If there's. Again, the county has made investments, I think as Ron, as Ron had mentioned, has made investments in some of these places, some of these things that. If there is some way that we could recoup a little bit of that money somehow. Uh, and, and if you wanna say on an equal share, equal partnership basis, uh, that would be great. I think we, we need to look into that. Uh, but. That's, you know, that's, that's a possibility, but. Uh, I mean, in, in my gut, I wanna see this project go. I really do. I really wanna see it succeed and be done with it. And I've shared with some of you already, you know, just in some of the construction stuff I've been involved with in the last couple of years at Ketchum. I mean, the, the, the costs are just, we had a project in nineteen that was at one point nine million dollars. And now same identical project in essence, this year is at three point two million dollars. And it's just, uh, you know, those, those costs are escalating big time and the longer we wait. The more costly it'll be.
If I could clarify a little bit, I, I don't wanna rob economic development. I think we need more money for economic development when you look at everything that's needed. But there's a situation for whatever reason, when the Olan bond was not paid off, that property should've been transferred back to the commissioners. It never was. So basically, the foundation has an asset that should be the commissioners. Today's market, it's probably a four or five million dollar building. I would turn around, transfer itself back to the foundation for, oh, one point eight million dollars. Great deal for them, we've got the one point eight that we need. They now fully control the Olan building with nothing to worry about in the future. And everybody benefits.
This building was really a good passion of mine and remodeled that courthouse the same way. It's a historic hundred-year-old building, right? And.
This is why he has great hair, by the way.
And I wanna see that thing standing in another hundred years, even two hundred years for, for a long time. And thirteen point eight million, I know our budget's twelve million, and I really don't wanna go over that twelve million dollar budget either. You guys have set a budget, taxpayers know about it now, and it's gonna be awful hard to go over that budget, right? But at the end of the day, we can't compromise on that building. I didn't compromise on this building when we built this. I stuck with it until we got the building that we needed, that we paid for. I don't wanna do that over there either, so. If we get the budget down closer to twelve million, I would like to go forward with it. If not, I think we need to preserve the envelope of that building and do the HVAC and everything, which is, I'm just guessing roughly six, eight million dollars. But then at a future date, we're gonna have to move everybody, everybody back out of that courthouse again and put it back in there. So I've got to catch twenty-two there trying to figure out.
Probably cost you a lot more.
It'd be a lot more money. Whatever price is per square foot now, I can't tell you, but it's gonna be higher.
Be worser.
Two times twice as worse, right? So, um, that's where I stand. I'm, I would love to see that building. One project, get it done, and everybody move back in, and we've got another building standing in there for a hundred years. We gotta look for the future too, not just here now, not twenty years down the road, not thirty years down the road, but a hundred years down the road. And that's the reason I never compromised on this building, because I wanna see this thing here for a long time too. And then in the future, what we set this building on this property, we can expand over here too in the future. And we need to do the same thing with the courthouse, just make sure it's there a hundred years from now, so somebody else can actually remodel it and keep it going for another hundred years, so. That's all I got on that.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone's comments. I mean, my, my mindset is, is I'm not comfortable moving forward until I see numbers in front of me that we have squeezed and that we have really polished up. From a high level overview and just with, with my brief meetings, I mean, I feel that there's definitely some, some duplication. My email, I think, said deprecation, my, my, I got the Offordsville slang and my iPhone hasn't picked that up yet, so I apologize. Could've been a worse word, I guess. So my. My mind is working just like I would if I did a private, a private project. Is this the best I can possibly get? And if so, then that's the number. And right now, I think this is a nice, you know, fifteen thousand feet view of what we have. Um, I do think that, you know, I definitely have a number of questions for a couple of the different vendors that I'll share, you know, privately. Where I do think there's some duplication, I do think there's some maybe excessive hours allocated based off the fourteen-month works cycle. I do think some of the hourly rates maybe need to be questioned a little bit. In my mind, what I would like for you to do is to, you know, um, one, work with the legal counsel. And, and knowing that the legal counsel's on the clock too, and Stephen Jones is wonderful, and, and that comes at a, at a price. So we gotta use him whenever you guys feel we need to use him. But every dollar matters, so use him efficiently. But to meet with the different vendors and, and, and do a line item by line item on who is doing what, who should be doing what. And I'm hopeful we can get a half million dollars squeezed out of this just after a couple preliminary meetings. So if we get this down, um, at least that, and then even more so, I hope. And then at that point, then say, if you wanna go even further, vanilla box the magistrate office and keep Dan in the jail. I'm teasing. I got like a sixty-minute attention span that is starting to wane here. So, but to meet with the vendors, um, and to make sure that all the numbers are meshing and then advise us, should we rebid? You know, here's what we're able to find in the cost reductions, and then here's a couple other options if you wanna pull some things out of this project. I'd like to have that by the next commissioners meeting on the fourteenth, um, because we've gotta keep this thing, gotta keep this thing moving.
Gotta keep moving. How long do we have to accept or reject the bid?
Uh, off the look, it should be sixty days.
Sure, before you know it.
What type of deadline do you feel we have as far as the seasonal changes? Meaning, is there something that can't be done in phase one if we wait till a certain period of time or?
No, there's, if anything, that, you know, I think I had mentioned this as we were going out to bid, which a little disappointing, you know, we had two general contractors that kinda dropped out day, one day of. And one the night before. Um, that seemed really excited about it, that hey, this is a nice indoor winter project, keep some crews and stuff busy, so. But that it is, so, you know, from a means and methods of attacking it, it's getting people moved out and it's, you're gonna be able, I mean, there's a. There's several months of demo and not just wholesale demo, it's, this is selective demo. So it's not like, start swinging a sledgehammer and taking a skid steer in there. It's selective demo because there's so much that retains, but. By the time, we're, obviously, we're not gonna probably put the roof on until steel supports and that equipment's up there and then be able to re-roof that under those areas. You know, there's, there's weather constraints on that and the masonry work. You know, they'll probably come out in the spring, but. We're gonna work through and align with them and that general trades package, when the best timing is for that.
So if you had two vendors drop out, and you said the day before, they didn't, they didn't drop out the day before. They either didn't have it done, didn't wanna bid, and then just informed us to that time period. And I struggle a little bit with rebidding when you have people who did their due diligence and came up with a bid. And then you, they're allowed to see all of their breakdown and then you go back to them. And ask them to shave their pencil a little bit because everybody knows what the price is. I don't know that that's fair to them, and if they weren't interested in bidding in the first place, what's changed their mind now?
Exactly. I, I don't disagree.
We work with our vendors, we get this exactly as Nathan has said, down to the, the bare bone. And then we look at, from our side, we look at what resources and, and we go from there. But it's difficult for this side to look at something until you guys have done that work and due diligence. Because we're not gonna, we're either gonna do it all and do it right, or. Do you have any idea why they dropped out?
The one bidder that was out of Ferdinand, it was, you know, well, come Wednesday, had a lot put together, but wasn't getting a masonry number yet. Because it's tough to get a masonry restoration number, a subcontractor that specializes in restoration. Didn't have that and that, uh, um, a window number yet, and I just wasn't sure if I was gonna get it, so I quit kinda working on it the last two days. You know, how much of those have merit to what they're telling us? It's hard to say, you know, it could be it telling me what you want.
Personally, not interested in rebidding. With a local contractor.
I, I would prefer not to rebid it, and that's assuming that the local contractor and you can get together, go down through. And then you feel extremely comfortable that the local contractor's bid is very fair.
Can I outline how that process will take place? We'll have a, we'll have a review meeting with them, and we can discuss some opportunities to save money. I cannot counter-accept any of that yet. You're gonna have to award that contract for the amount that they bid. Then get those contracts out and started. Then, at that time, we can issue proposal requests. We can't have that.
That's what I'm worried about.
Well, I can't, okay, then if that, okay.
You bid, you bid that contract out.
So then we rebid. The local contractor rebids their new numbers.
With those things.
With the scope change.
Yes, and then they're higher than the second bid. Can we still go with them?
If first bid is not responsive or not responsible.
I mean, if, if vendor number two is lower than the local vendor when we rebid it, can we go with the high bid?
The easy, the first answer is typically is no unless that low bidder is not responsible or unresponsible, or not responsive or unresponsible. That, that's, that is the, that's the risk in rebidding, right?
That's a can of worms, we're probably gonna wanna open up because then we'd be showing bad light on.
So what I would recommend, when you're making those awards, how we've, we've navigated this a lot recently. Because as you've just mentioned on escalation, I mean. We tracked a lot from January of twenty-one to, we've seen easily a point and a half over each month, so. One thing that, one tool that you could use is you, you have to have the funds dedicated from your fiscal body. To approve for the project, so the challenge there becomes. Um, all right, well, hey, we, we gotta have some funds that we wanna get out. What I would recommend is you're budgeting your contingency that's in there, that's uncommitted from you now. So whatever those items are, and in this case, we're budgeting, I think it was five, five hundred forty-six thousand dollars is your five percent construction. You're essentially taking that funds, rolling it into your construction now, and when you go through. And when you go through and issue those proposal requests for, you know, deductive changes or those requests from that contract, you then replenish that contingency with the funds that come out of that.
Okay. Well, I mean, personally, I, I, I have enough trust in the local vendor to know that we're going to get a one-to-one cost reduction. You know, if we bid it at what X and then he thinks he can get X minus, I, I trust that we would get that true X minus and it wouldn't be, you know, the ten cents on the dollar or whatever.
I don't want to rebid at all. And, and I think the path to go down would be to talk to them upfront, see if that's something that they would be willing to do. I know it's not in our contractor, I just have to go with the thirteen point eight million bid. Hopefully, we can trust our local vendor to say what he says he will do or do what he says.
We will conduct a, so, and I just want, I'm, we're in a public meeting, I want to, we will conduct a review meeting and see what opportunities are there, there are to reduce scope.
Can I be there?
Yes.
That was easy. Said never ask a question if you don't know the answer, so I didn't know the answer. I, I would, I would like to be there. Tony?
Yes.
I'd rather have Grant, I, I think you can be there, but I would want Grant to tell you.
Maybe the presidents of both bodies can be there.
As long as you don't exceed the number, you could have more than one.
So we'll come back with a higher number?
Well, there could be more than one councilman there, only one commissioner.
I think both presidents and the boards should be there with Grant, have the discussion. That way you guys can keep us up to date what's going on.
We're going to learn what we can and can't do and be more knowledgeable. And then it's a heck of three councilmen who want to be there, I mean.
I think, I think one and one would be preferable.
I think keep it small.
Small.
Rebidding, you open up several can of worms. One of it is to this body in itself. You know, they, they did their due diligence, they did their part and everything seems appropriate. So we kind of, our word has to mean something as well. You know, they weren't, other people weren't interested in.
Yeah, that's the reason, I, I prefer not to rebid at all.
I think we're all in agreement that we prefer not to rebid. Okay. Well.
I, I would just add to that too, you know, in, while you're in that discussion and with the contractors, I think the, you know, just, just to be on the record, I think page three needs to be looked at as well. Of your handout on some, some of those costs.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they will be, those, those were the, that's the page I was alluding to earlier.
You need to be there.
But again, I, I, I'm excited to work with Garmong on this project. I know they've been in every projects for economic development in the past and
I just, I just see some areas there.
Well, I just wanted to make sure people didn't think I was thinking that any one vendor was inflating the numbers. That's not the case. I just have some questions on them and, and I'm excited with all the partners, our QAW, Garmong, and that we've worked with to this end.
And I've worked with construction managers, we're on that presently, and at Crane, I've dealt with a lot of construction projects at Crane. And yeah, some of this is a little high.
Okay. All right, Jeremy, I'll let you coordinate the meetings with Tony and I, we're fairly flexible.
Jennifer, did we need to have a comment on what you and I talked on earlier or are we good there? We're talking about current, actual, the spin today. Is there any clarity?
You had made comment, it was part of this number. My, my question to Jeremy before coming down here is the amount of money we've already spent. And I wasn't sure that that was a part of this total number and he assured me that it is.
Yes, she was referencing the cost of our QAW and
And Garmong that we've spent.
Our pre-construction costs.
Bit of money already.
In my mind.
And those things.
I'm sorry, in my mind, yes, from that first penny we spent eighteen months ago or twelve months ago, that's in that twelve million dollars.
Yes, it's in, those things are itemized in your soft cost.
Okay. Okay. Councilmen, commissioners, any closing comments?
Good meeting.
Yeah, good meeting. Appreciate everyone get, getting here so quickly.
Anybody out there? Good.
Okay, Lara, Lara, do you have any, I think our QAW, we're, we're good there? Okay, we've got the carpet and everything all lined out, we're ready to go there. All right, perfect.
I think Dan's going to change it again though.
Dan, he's going hardwood, yeah, he's getting real hard. So, okay. We're over sixty minutes apparently. Nathan's losing it. Okay, if there's no further.
With, with that on the council side, motion to adjourn? Matt, second? Mike, all fair ride?
Commissioners, motion to adjourn? Michael, second?
I like this. Second.